Next year, eighty-five million dollars less than the actual money it has to spend, because TAP is funded at less than full tuition and colleges eat the difference. So it would be nice if the budget just didn't reflect that eighty-five million dollars. It would be even nicer if that was covered. And also, last June, it looked like Queens College had a decent budget for the year. And then, there was a two-to-three percent cut. Why? Not because money wasn't appropriated, but because Cuomo ordered it sequestered in order to fund some anticipated contract with the PSC, right? So that immediately canceled searches and hiring, and it's, that's the reason why building and grounds is reduced to six people. And if you close the nuclear power plant nearby, which is a good idea, but electricity costs get higher. Or you raise wages to fifteen dollars an hour in New York State, which is great, but you don't increase the budget to pay for it, you are hollowing out CUNY. And access to higher education without any resources is not equity. It's a phony and fake promise of access. So that's the situation in which we're going to have this conversation. One of the main things that the union has been fighting for in this contract is 7K for adjuncts. That's a whole other story. But also, other things like the academic, the undergraduate enhancement efforts, right, which involve changing the course load expectations for faculty. All of these things require funding in order to provide a real education. So that's the situation in which we meet. We also have the situation in which our college president, President Matos Rodriguez, is becoming the chancellor of CUNY after a long search, and we wish him well. But what we also wish is that he will pull an Andy Biford. That is, the chancellor of CUNY needs to stand up and say, Biford stood up and said, "It's a fine subway system. I need forty billion dollars to fix it. You figure out how to fund it." We need a chancellor who will stand up and say, "CUNY is falling down around our ears. It's being hollowed out. It will take..." The union wanted three-hundred-and-thirty-two million this year in budget increase. It will take that kind of funding. It will take hundreds of millions of dollars to make up for the disinvestment that's taken place over the last years in CUNY. All right, so with that cheery introduction, but you know, I've been on sabbatical, so I'm relaxed while I say it. I would, I would like to invite our panelists to come up, and they can make some statements. And I hope that they will address the funding they think is needed to keep CUNY a vibrant, excellent institution of higher education. Thank you. Okay, so Senators... We have mics up here. They're handheld, if you like. You can, if you'd like a seat, you're welcome to have a seat.
I can stand.
It's all, it's all good. It's all good. Madam Chair?
Okay. I can stand too.
It's... Okay, okay, so Deputy Chief of Staff Laura Rubio. Yes, thank you. Good to have you here. Come on up. There's room, and there's water.
Smitha, you're the most important person in here. Students.
Students are more important than anybody else. Yeah.
Okay, so here's, here, we have our panelists, and we have limited time, so we hope that each panelist will make a statement of around five minutes or so, and then have a chance to respond to each other's comments. And then we'll have some comments from other people who we've invited, and then there'll be general Q and A. And I understand not everybody will be able to stay for the entire thing, but, so let's get started.
Okay. My name is Toby Stavisky, and I'm proud to represent Queens College in the State Senate. This is in my Senate district, as is Queensborough. And in fact, I went to graduate school here. So, yeah, these buildings weren't here at that time, but still, I started at Hunter and got married, moved to Queens, and finished at Queens. I must disagree with a little bit of what you said. Not the part about higher education, but the fact that we have a majority in the State Senate, I think, is extremely, extremely positive. Because for years, we've tried to pass Women's Reproductive Health Bill, we've tried to pass sensible gun control legislation, we've tried to discuss the issue of abuse, clergy abuse, and so on, all of these issues. And in fact, my first Higher Education Committee meeting, we passed, the first bill was the ban on conversion therapy, and the second bill was the Dream Act. So I believe that we have made remarkable, remarkable progress on many issues. I wish higher ed were one of them. But having said that, we did increase the base aid for community colleges by a hundred dollars per full-time equivalent. And that's a bad it. The problem is that when the governor released his executive budget in January, he cut many, he cut all, almost all of the opportunity programs, plus other programs as well. When it came time to pass our one-house bill in the Senate, we had some revisions, but when it came, that really doesn't count. That's, that's like a, a practice round. The main job that we have, I think, as legislators is to pass the budget by April 1st, and that we did. And it was a balanced budget, obviously. The problem stems from the fact that when the leaders negotiate with the governor, they are given what are called table amounts. It's an amount for each conference table. There are tables in Edu-, Oswald's Education and Labor, Higher Education, I should say. Higher Education, there was a separate one for K through twelve, or pre-K through twelve, plus many, many others, Economic Development, Crime and Correction, and so on. Higher Education had the highest table amount, which is the amount that the governor and the legislative leaders agree on for legislative additions. They really weren't additions, they were restorations, because we had to restore the thirty-eight million dollar cut to the opportunity programs, HeOP, SheOP, Liberty Partnership, all of the educational opportunity programs. That left us with very little money, because our table amount was fifty-five million dollars. Once we restored the thirty-eight million, we only had seventeen million left. That was not enough to fill in the TAP gap. It was not enough, certainly nowhere near enough, to improve the salaries of the adjuncts. Now, we came to the conclusion that if we resolve some of the TAP gap issues, that money would be used for adjuncts to make them full-time, et cetera. Unfortunately, that didn't happen, and each year, the TAP gap increases by the two-hundred-dollar increase in tuition. So this is a never-ending struggle, and I firmly believe that perhaps it's time to stop this, the tuition increases, to stop the TAP gap. The cost, I believe, was something like a hundred-and-thirty million dollars. Am I remembering? I think, I think that's what the, the number was. And we had seventeen million to, to restore and add programs. So that, that really is a summary of what happened in Albany. I really believe that the students and the faculty and the community has to come together the same way as the folks did in K through twelve with their court case on trial, on the school equity issue, on the campaign for fiscal equity lawsuit. But it's more than that. It's gotta be a mobilization of students from all over the CUNY campuses, and in fact, the state university, because they have a TAP gap also. But it's not as pronounced as in, as at CUNY. So that's a summary of what happened, and I did, because everybody, every Democrat voted for it, because there were many other good things in the budget. I just felt this was not a, a good budget for higher education.
Thank you, David, for organizing this thing, or at least working with Kessler to organize this. I wanna agree and support everything that my chairwoman has said, Senator Stavisky. She is the chairperson of the State Senate's Higher Education Committee. I do not have the privilege of being on the committee, but I often sit in on her committee hearings anyway, and I'm happy that she allows me to do so, because higher education is near and dear to my heart. I wanna thank the Professional Staff Congress for the incredible amount of work that this union has done over the years, and in the three-and-a-half months that I've been in the Senate, I have been hearing nonstop from Barbara. She texts me at all hours of the day and night. She is persistent and concise, so she's not, you know, she doesn't go on and on, she just delivers the message. And like Senator Stavisky, I, I was extremely disappointed in how the budget wound up. And she's given her very clear insights into what has happened, what the mechanics are like. I will say, as, as a beginning, you know, I am considered a freshman, or a fresh person, I should say, being my first... I'm not that kind of fresh, okay, Toby? Not that kind of fresh.
I apologize.
Okay. Fresh in terms of being a first-termer.
Ideas.
And, and ideas, thank you. Thank you very much. And, and just seeing the budget process, I mean, I, you know, there, there were a few, there were a few difficulties that we had to encounter. First and foremost, we, we had to encounter the fact that we, we had trust and have a great deal of faith in the union and what, what the union does, and, and what the union stands for. And fighting for the, the TAP gap, or covering the TAP gap, which is, you know, it's eighty-five for CUNY, but it's another roughly sixty-five for SUNY. Politically, you can't do just CUNY without doing SUNY, so really, the entire TAP is a hundred-and-fifty million dollars. And then, of course, trying to get to the 7K for adjuncts, and, you know, by the way, I, I have been an adjunct right here at Queens as well, so I know, I, I can certainly feel the pain there. And these are issues that are, were front and center, as put forth by, by the PSC. And in our deliberations, both publicly and privately, some of the challenges were, well, one of the challenges was the simple fact that CUNY wasn't very insistent upon what it needed. And so, when you talk about what David mentioned before, yeah, we should get the chancellor. By the way, you're kind of familiar with the incoming chancellor, aren't you?
Yeah.
Felix Rodriguez Matos, who I have a great deal of affection and admiration for, you know, we call him Felo. He is, he has been the steward here at Queens College for many years now, and he's now our incoming chancellor, and, you know, he's gotta speak up. When they testified at the budget hearings, it was, well, we just, don't you, don't you wanna be clear about what you need? And, and like, I felt that they weren't clear enough. They weren't demanding enough. And they should be, because you know what? The budget, at the end of the day, almost by definition, nobody is happy with a budget. But in the budget process, you fight, you kick and scream for as much money as you can get. And that's precisely what the Professional Staff Congress does. Unfortunately, the state budget process does not allocate anything to PSC. We allocate to CUNY. And if CUNY is not the entity that's kicking and screaming for the money, it's just a much weaker case. And of course, we know why the chancellor or the interim chancellor was not insistent upon it. Because at the end of the day, Republican majority, or Democratic majority in the State Senate, there is one guy, currently, it's a guy, that holds the massive amount of leverage in the state budgeting process. And that is the guy known as the guy on the second floor, proverbially and literally. The governor has a huge amount of leverage and power in the budget process. And who appoints the chancellor? Who appoints the chancellor? Who appoints the trustees? And so, you know, we're kind of caught in, between a rock and a hard place when it comes to funding CUNY. We need to fund CUNY more robustly. They need to ask for it and want it and be held accountable for it. And then they need to negotiate in earnest and in very good faith, I would say, with stronger faith, with the Professional Staff Congress. So I applaud all of you for what you have continued to do. I applaud Barbara and the leadership of the PSC. They have been incessant and unrelenting. But we are not budgeting for the PSC. And so there are some, there's gotta be, and you know, now that I've seen the process unfold for one season, I'm gonna try to think of ways, along with Senator Stavisky, to, to try to figure out how to establish more accountability, and therefore allow us and make the case to our colleagues. Because, you know, quite frankly, not all of our colleagues prioritize higher education at the highest level. And so we need to convince our colleagues that this is money that is necessary and is going to be well-spent, especially as an investment to our, our future leaders, like Smitha right here. I said, as she sat down, she's the most important person in this room, because we're all here for Smitha and the students, and we depend on them for our future. So with that, I, unfortunately, I can't stay for the entire panel. I'll stay for as long as I can. I'll, I'll be late for the next one, because this is very important. But I wanna thank you for setting this up, for inviting me. And, you know, this year's budget process may be over, but the city's budget process is just beginning to heat up, and we still have next year. So, you know, we don't, this is not a fight that any of us should give up. And, and I wanna say hello and give a shout-out to my buddy, former council member Jimmy Vaca, who also teaches here. Great to see you, Councilman Vaca. Jimmy and I have known each other since either of us had white hair. So, good to see you, Jimmy.
Can I just add, Jimmy, great to see you. There's one other aspect that I should've mentioned in terms of PSC. I think things will improve once you have a contract. And I think that is a very important ingredient. I think it's terribly unfair that there is no contract. And this has gone on before, and let's hope that a fair contract is negotiated.
Cheers.
Yes. Hello, everyone. Thank you so much, PSC, for having me today. My name is Smitha Vargis. Is that better? Mic check, yes. So I'm a senior here, and I'm a student here at, at Queens College. I was the former statewide chair of NiPerg, and I'm currently, recently, the new legislative director for the University Student Senate. So that being said, just to give a very, very brief background of where I come from, I was born and raised in Queens. I, you know, I come from a family, I, I'm the typical CUNY, you know, low-income, person-of-color woman, girl that's been working since I was sixteen years old. I come from a working-class family. Every single sibling of mine has been to CUNY, York, City College, Baruch, I go to Queens College, my brother just transferred to Queensborough. And so, so, so that being said, I don't need to explain the fact that CUNY is a gem, the hidden gem of New York City. It provides, it's a vehicle for upward mobility for the working class. It provides people like me, like you, an opportunity to serve this economy and have a better opportunity, just in general. And so, so that being said, New York City is also considered, or New York State is considered to be progressive. And I think that this budget really made a lot of us think about, and, and I wanna thank the senators for being here, really, really appreciate you guys being here. But it's really unfortunate because, to hear, to hear your comments, because we've been advocating for, for, for expansion of, of funding for CUNY for years, and our numbers have been pretty specific. And year after year after year after year, the governor cuts funding to opportunity programs for the most vulnerable New Yorkers. He cuts TAP, and then the legislature, you know, restores the cuts, and it's just a game of back and forth. And today, we're in this predicament where our institution is barely maintained, and we have to be grateful for the fact that we are barely being maintained. We don't have enough money to pay for our adjuncts. You guys do not even have a living wage, and I'm so sorry for that. CUNY students are a part of your struggle. We are in solidarity. That is unfair. And I have to say that, yes, the governor, you know, he's not, he's not so popular at CUNY for, for these reasons. A lot of this stems from the governor. He has a lot of power, one of the, one of the, one of the few states where the governor has that much power. But that being said, maybe, because, you know, Senator Stavisky, you mentioned, well, the students and the faculty need to come together. We've came together. We come together every single year. So maybe, the legislature needs to come together with the faculty and the students. And maybe, if the legislature prioritized filling in the TAP gap, maybe then the governor might bend that way as well.
Just tell it like it is. Just tell us how you really feel.
My name is Laura Rubio. I'm the deputy chief of staff to Senator Jessica Ramos. She is the chair of Labor, and really sad that she couldn't be here today, but we had some scheduling conflicts. As a CUNY alum, a John Jay alum, I'm really excited to be here, and I was also part, in my CUNY years, of the tuition freeze movement for students. And one of the biggest things, and, and as you mentioned, the, the onus should not be on faculty and on students to fill in this TAP gap. And as the institutions that provide the most mobility for working families, that, the, the system is currently broken and should not be how we function. And so, you know, Senator Ramos agrees with the sentiment of the budgets, and there are, there's, there's much work that we need to do, and whether that means, you know, taking more buses to Albany with students and faculty, and making sure that the governor realizes that there is people power, and there has been people power for years. But now, we need to maybe bring it to his house and make sure that, that he can't hide away from it. They, you know, there, there are other CUNY things that we need to make sure that we're talking about, you know, not only faculties, but services that CUNY institutions provide, and making sure that they have enough to repair the actual buildings, and that students aren't taking the burden of their tuition to do those repairs. And so, thank you so much for having me, and I'll be here throughout the panel in case you have any questions or want me to direct anything to Senator Ramos.
Okay, thank you, panelists. We now have representatives, I know Scott is here from York. Do we have representatives from Queensborough and LaGuardia here? Okay, so, brief statements, if you come up, we'll give you the mic. Then we're gonna hear from Mike Fabricant, then we'll throw it open for questions.
My name's Professor Scott Scheidlauer. I'm the chapter chair for York College. And I wanna thank you, David. I wanna thank you, Senators Stavisky, Senator Lou, and the student, Senator, I can't pronounce your name.
Smitha.
Smitha, forgive me. And Jessica Ramos is representative. Thank you very much. Okay, I heard everything you said. I listened very carefully. Maybe what you need to do is make the trustee's job a lifetime job, so that the, so that the governor can't get rid of him. I have a great story on New York One last week. The governor wanted more charter schools, and the Assembly and the Senate said, "No." And you know what happened? No more charter schools. You guys want more money for CUNY than SUNY? Put it in. The governor says, "No." You say, "Forget it."
Screw the governor.
That's it.
Oh, did you get that? You heard what I said.
Screw the governor. We have people that are starving. We have people that can't live. We have adjuncts, they need much more money, and it doesn't help. I have students. Students are the most important thing, you said, right, Senator Lou? Okay, I had a student who was a very talented social worker. She was taking social work at York. I asked her what she wanted to do afterwards. She wanted to get her master's in social work. I said, "Okay, do you have people to write letters of recommendation for you?" She said, "Yes, our professor so-and-so." I said, "I don't know that professor." I looked into it. He was an adjunct. He was gone the year she wanted to graduate. We need more full-time faculty. We need adjuncts to be stable and stay at CUNY. We've got, and the only way to do that is to give them more money, since the private colleges are starting to give them more money. I believe Mercy's giving them seven thousand, or is it Fordham? One of them is. We need to close the TAP gap. He creates the Excelsior Scholarship, which does absolutely nothing for CUNY. Helps SUNY, then he says it's free. If you wanna see free, I'm the archivist at York. Come to York, I'll show you a bulletin from the year York was founded, nineteen-sixty-seven. You wanna know how much it costs under tuition? You wanna know the figure there? Zero. Not a penny. Nothing. CUNY has, I don't know whether CUNY being free at this moment is right, but more money for CUNY, more money to help the adjuncts, more money to close the, I know, more money to close the TAP gap, these are the things we need to do. And if the governor doesn't wanna do it, what do we say?
Screw the governor. Screw the governor.
Okay, thank you very much. Everyone have a good holiday, by the way.
Thank you, Scott. You can see why he's the chapter chair at York.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. My name is David Lieberman. I am the chairman of the Physics Department at Queensborough Community College. And rather than talk about how we should get the governor to give us more money, I just wanna talk about, a little bit about conditions. So I started at Queensborough thirty, almost thirty-two years ago. At the time, we had a fairly new building, built in nineteen-seventy-eight. We had about eight thousand students, which was about the maximum the campus was designed to handle, and faculty salaries were okay. Thirty-two years later, we have twice as many students. Our newest building was built in nineteen-seventy-eight. So, twice as many students, same amount of campus buildings, more disrepair. You know what that means. Inferior infrastructure for us to do the job we need to do. Faculty salaries, adjusted for inflation, faculty are paid between a third and a half less than they were in nineteen-eighty-seven. So, we underfund the people who we demand more of to help our students, who, that's what we're there for. Make it worse, all reports indicate that our K-through-twelve system is a failure. Most students, over seventy percent, who graduate from high school are not prepared for college. But our funding model is based on credits, not on how much we need to support our students. So, governor, the legislature, everyone says, "Oh, student will graduate from community college with sixty credits, from the four-year college with a hundred-and-twenty credits." Our funding is all based on credits, so if you wanna add hours to help students in need, you gotta find the money for it from somewhere else. We're not providing it, because our funding model is not based that way. And so I think that, besides more money, we need the state to recognize that public higher education is important, is one of the most important things the state can provide at CUNY, at SUNY, at the community colleges. And that the method of funding these institutions has to be based upon what you need these institutions to do, not on what you would like them to be like. We are not going to be like the University of Chicago or Harvard, where our students can take a three-hour course that gives them three credits and do just fine. We need to be able to provide additional instruction, and that additional instruction needs to be funded. Thank you.
Okay, LaGuardia?
So, good morning, esteemed senators, esteemed faculty, students and staff. I am here as a CUNY faculty member in my seventh year at LaGuardia Community College and also as a member of LaGuardia's PSC's chapter executive board. Where can CUNY take you? This question is posed on a bus stop poster on my way home in Astoria to my college campus at LaGuardia in Long Island City. CUNY took me, as you heard from your student rep, the daughter of an immigrant family, to becoming a tenured professor in fall of 2019. CUNY, oh, thank you. A struggle in and of itself, yes. CUNY took me into a department of social scientists who truly represent the spirit of education and the effectiveness of interdisciplinary thinking. CUNY took and continues to take my students to an educational space that provides them quality access to learning, that encourages the use of their voices to better represent not only how they view themselves, but also the transformative power of higher education. But what happens when the New York State budget dismally returns the faith in the question of where can CUNY take you? Since we're here today to talk about the future of CUNY, it is a sincere disappointment when a budget does not reflect the values of the faculty, students and staff that make CUNY, CUNY. One of my students just last week in my class wrote the following on her educational journey through New York City public schools, which exactly supports what you just heard. But I want to share that with you because oftentimes we do forget that students are behind in the need for why the budget needs to address their concerns. So my student wrote, "I was ready to graduate from middle school and move on to high school. Again, it was the same process. Students didn't care and neither did their teachers. I wasn't the best student either. I slacked in almost all of my classes and I didn't have much of an interest in my education, especially since the schools that I had been to didn't care for me either. Then when I got to college, it made me feel like it was all impossible. I didn't understand basic reading, writing or math. I had to take remedial courses, which I was tired of taking. All that was supposed to be simple was hard to understand. And as a result, I ended up dropping out twice. Now, I didn't believe school was right for me, especially in a system that was broken. I didn't have the best resources in school, but if I did, I would have done a lot better. I know it. And becoming aware of these issues, I myself dedicated to pursue an English degree to help students that were in my position understand a bit more in hope to be a greater change. As locally elected officials, you must be our voices at the Senate to make the values of Queens become a reality and change our current budget allocations for the city. When we are left out of the budget, what does this really mean for our campus at LaGuardia? Well, the possibilities for pursuing education become diminished. One of the main items left out of Albany, as we know, was the support for the tap gap. When our campuses are left out to pay the difference, students are more likely to fall through, like the story I shared of my student. So where has CUNY then taken students? When the student-centered programs like our writing center, which is open now fewer hours with less assistance for students to clearly express their ideas clearly, not just for English classes, but for all classes, and that our counseling programs are now overworked and understaffed with an even greater demand, where has CUNY taken our students now? Faculty and staff retire, and there are no replacement lines. The budget needs to adequately compensate this so that the part-time faculty are not piecing together classes at poverty wages and so that the student services provided by the staff, such as in our own library media services, are not reduced to being barely operational. Where has CUNY taken the faculty and the staff, then? CUNY must be a part of the state and the city budget, and the government representatives such as yourselves must take us there. With the proper amount of funding, we know that CUNY can take all of us, students, faculty and staff, to new levels that brighten, that support and that engage global citizens in a city that we all call home. Thank you for your time.
It's a pleasure to ask Mike Fabricant, who has done more for the PSC in Albany than pretty much anybody in the last year or two, to give us some comments that will then conclude and we will open it up for questions. Mike?
Can you hear me? Use the mic, Mike. All right. So, I want to begin by thanking panelists for being here. And then I want to say that frankly, there is a lot of responsibility to go around regarding the failure of Senate and frankly, the Assembly in meeting the needs of this university. But what I want, what I want to say is that, I got a phone ringing, I gotta shut off.
I didn't make that announcement.
That what has to happen in Albany among our champions, among our champions, and I do not hold new senators who've just arrived in Albany getting their feet on the ground accountable. They are trying to figure out how to do this job in a way, I think, that begins to meet the needs of this university. But I want to say that the fight has to be such, the fire in the belly has to be such, that you recognize that the future of your constituents depends upon the health of this university. This university winds up in a place that it can no longer meet the needs of your constituents. You are not only failing your constituents, you are failing the city and you are failing to some extent the reasons you were elected in the first place. There is no institution, bar none, in this city that does more to move people from poverty to the middle class than the City University of New York. That is not hyperbole. That is fact. The Stanford study has underscored that empirically. And yet, we continue to neglect this precious, precious, precious institution, one in which many of us from earlier generations were a part of, and we got our boost into the next stages of our life, which was so eloquently stated earlier. But we seem, the same fire in the belly that took us through CUNY to other stages of our life doesn't seem to be present now in relationship to subsequent generations whose same future depends upon this university. So let's talk about responsibility. I would agree with Senator Lou, Senator Stavisky, that the PSC fought hard and long. And we're gonna have to rethink how we fight up there because, in fact, we didn't yield the results that were needed, although we pressed as hard as we knew how and we had two to three times the number of members up there. And we work with students and we work with community groups and we work with a cross-section of folks. Our issues were known. Let's make no mistake about it. Our power was known. But something happened. One, I think as Senator Lou said, this university is not making the case for this university. Let's name that. That's real. That's powerful. The PSC has been at board meetings and so on to press the board, but I want to say what they did do. They came in with a budget that asked for an increase of seven and a half percent after those budget, that budget press that the PSC organized at hearings, board hearings. They were gonna come in at far less. They come in, came in at a seven and a half percent increase with a, not a great amount, but far more than what the Senator Assembly offered on the tap gap. So we can't fully blame the university. Where I would hold them accountable is they're almost invisible in Albany. They're lobbying, half the number of people up there are lobbying. The chancellor, almost invisible. And I think Senator Lou, again, was quite clear about why. To whom does the chancellor report? On what basis is the job defined? We'll leave the rest to your imagination. Two, the governor. The governor is not an easy man. We know he's tactically shrewd and he's managed again and again, in my estimation, on the budget to outmaneuver the Senate and the Assembly. The issue now is revenue. We cannot do for CUNY what CUNY needs without new revenue. You put a 2% cap at the top and you have no new revenue coming in and you have healthcare and education, K-12 claiming X amount of it, and you fob off whatever the increased costs are for CUNY on the students, and then you say, "Oh, we did 1.5, it's a 3%, so CUNY got 4.5 for public money." No. It got 1.5 and the students are paying the rest. And they're, and it's students, as we all know, who are paying, you know, whose family incomes, 70, 60% of our students is under $30,000, but that's never mentioned. But it's not, we know what the governor does and we know how he constrains that budget and we know what his commitment is to the City University of New York. It's not even meager. I won't say meager at best. It's not even meager. That's why the Senate and Assembly have to stand up for parts of the social programming and institutions that make huge differences that the governor is otherwise not only gonna neglect, he's gonna deny. So the question is how? You know, that's the question. That's a fair question. But let's go back to what the Senate did and the Assembly in the process. One, the Senate came forward with $5 million in their one House bill for tap gap. $5 million, when we'd come in with X number of dollars, far more than that. We can't just simply say that those one-House bills fail to matter. They matter. I'm not saying they get funded, but they matter. They send a message when the three leaders of the House and the Assembly, the Governor step into a room, when the Senate is saying fundamentally, and the five, and the Assembly is saying 15, you're sending a message to the governor about the value of the City University of New York in the budget process. So that happened. And folks have to take responsibility as well. I'm not saying that it's one person or one individual or one group, but there's a responsibility there. You know Andrea Stewart-Cousins, the new leader? She's done a lot of very good things. There's no doubt. And here, I would echo Senator Stavisky. On the other hand, on the budget side, not so much. Recitation of the accomplishments are non-budgetary, that Senator Stavisky named. They're not, and I think she would acknowledge that. They're non-budgetary. It's on the budget side that we are going to have to make real headway. And the Senate and Assembly, frankly, and I'm gonna be real clear about this, has not been prepared to challenge in a serious way the 2% cap and the revenue issue. Right? Maybe privately, sometimes publicly, but not so much. So here's a thought. This can be done differently. We could have a wraparound budget and go past April 1st. We could. And you could cause the governor to line item veto every one of the single items that he fails to support and have him take responsibility after April 1st for what he's failing to support. That hasn't happened. It's been disguised in this process, which in many ways benefits the governor. I understand the desire to meet April 1st. I understand the pressure to meet April 1st. But let me conclude by saying this. There's far more pressure. There's far more difficulty. There's far more sense of unraveling and difficulty within CUNY at this particular moment. And that pressure has to be acknowledged in a way that, in fact, is acknowledged in the budget-making process because we value CUNY and we value institution that makes the kind of difference it does. My last point. Seven, or two points. 7K is at the center of this for part-time faculty. We cannot keep running an institution on poverty wages for part-time faculty. That day has to end. And it has to end as soon as possible. We are not gonna get there overnight, but we gotta get there. We've gotta make that happen. We need the state and the city in partnership to pay just wages, not financing universities that it does what it must do in order to sustain an organization that's on its knees, basically. Final point. Like climate change, like other social institutions, you can keep hollowing it out and hollowing it out and hollowing it out, like an ice cube on climate change, and suddenly it cracks. You never knew it was coming. You know, you never knew it was gonna happen. And you hollow it out enough and the institution cracks. It splinters. We're not there yet, but we're being hollowed out. And it's the state and city's responsibility to step up and make sure that's reversed for faculty, for staff, for students, for the future of this city. Thank you.
Now, you see why he was the first vice president and he's been pressing very hard on these issues for a long time. So as we know, as we saw in Notre Dame, right? You can, you can, you can have an institution that you think is central to who you are and if you don't fund it, it can go up in flames overnight and be gone. And we are custodians of the City University of New York for the next generation and we are failing it. We are failing to fund it. I want to thank everybody who is here and open it up now to questions from the audience. Okay, Abby. Here, I will pass the mic around.
I have a question. I know that the community colleges are funded by the city, right? So I'm wondering, it-
The city puts in more than the state does.
Okay. Exactly. So I'm wondering, is there a way for us, the, the four-year colleges, to switch to city funding? Because that is the only way, I think, we will bypass this Cuomo obstacle. So have, have, are we thinking about this? Is it possible? Am I crazy? Yeah.
You, you could try that, but that doesn't necessarily get you more money. It's not like the city of New York is awash with lots of extra money also. At the end of the day, it does have to be, it's a budget priority. Like, like Mike said, we have, we have to kick and scream. In, in a democracy, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. And the squeakiest wheel gets the most grease. So whether it be at this, in, in the city budget or the state budget, it's still, it's always gonna be a struggle in this. I, I believe in this, I believe the city budget doesn't give enough for community colleges also. So, and so a lot of it has to do, I think, you know, there's a great deal of talk about reforming the MTA and the system that runs the MTA. Maybe somebody needs to take a look at the system that runs CUNY as well.
Questions?
Hi. I understand that-
I understand that by state law, the community colleges are supposed to be funded in such a way that the tuition is no more than one-third of the cost. And every year, the legislature passes a bill to basically exempt all the localities from meeting that responsibility. Is that true?
The first part is, the state, in the education law, one-third is supposed to be funded by the locality, one-third by the state, and one-third is tuition. I don't believe we've had any legislation to exempt. Many of the upstate community colleges that are part of SUNY do meet that requirement, and that's an issue I have raised repeatedly. But I don't think that's the solution. I do, well, let me say this, I think the state's contribution has been so low and declining so rapidly, that is the source of the issue. And sometimes the localities don't have the tax base to put in the one-third. This has been a problem in the upstate communities. Obviously, the locality, in our case, is the City of New York, and they pay about, I think it's 40% or so of the, I'm sorry, the state puts in about 40% on the community colleges.
I have a question, actually. My name's Jonathan Buxbaum, I teach in the Media Studies Department here at Queens College, and I'd like to pick up on something that Senator Stavisky referred to, suggesting that that might be a possible model for us to follow, which was the campaign for fiscal equity. But my understanding of that was that it started as a legal fight to demand in 1993, something like that, to demand that there be equitable funding for K through 12, because too much money was going to upstate and not coming back to New York City for K through 12, and that that was inequitable, because it was discriminatory against people of color and poor people in New York City. It went to the courts, I don't know how long it took, but something like 10 years?
Much longer.
Longer than that?
It goes back to the 1950s, I believe, and the state lost, I mean, the good guys lost the case every single time, whether it be in state court or federal court, most notably the Levittown decision.
Well, that actually is not my understanding, and you know far more than I do, but I thought that they won in the courts, and the courts said to the legislature, you have to give the money to New York City, and the legislature failed to do that. And I may be wrong about that, but my, my real question is, this is a long political problem that New York, New York City has had, and CUNY has had. So we can villainize Cuomo, and he certainly deserves it, but we could also villainize his father, we can villainize Pataki. In other words, that seems to be a very difficult challenge. So how are you suggesting that we can pressure the legislature to force the issue and vote the money? That's, that's what I took to be your suggestion. And I mean, it's true what David said, I mean, Mike Fabrican and Senator Lou said that Barbara is pestering them and leaning on them all the time. I mean, we feel that we're trying, and maybe we're not doing enough, we could all do more, but I'm not sure that I understand exactly what the political strategy should be to get the money that all of us in this room feel that CUNY obviously deserves.
Sure. Well, first, the campaign for fiscal equity that resulted in a court decision that required the state to cough up enough money to give all the, I guess some people call it--
And, well, thank you for being here, Senator Stavinsky. Last, last time you came, I wanted to ask you something, there wasn't time. Well, I, I'm studying Latin American Studies, and I'm having an issue with my, my career. I tried to look for classes for this semester, and literally, out of the more than 50 classes that are listed for the, for the major, there are only 12 that are being offered, and out of those 12, I only qualify for like three of them. So I tried to talk to my advisor for Latin American Studies, and it's only one professor that only works two hours a week. Those two hours I'm working, so I got to pay for college, I cannot miss work, and so I am being, well, I'm having an issue with that. How am I supposed to study if I don't have the resources to do so? And I'm one of the studies, as I mentioned, that has to pay for, for college. I don't qualify for TAP, for FAPSA, for anything. So the question goes back to also adjuncts and students, how, why does CUNY punish middle class, either students or faculty that only want the best to do something better? How am I supposed to continue with my education when I don't have those resources?
You hit the nail right on the head. That's, that's the quandary. I mean, when, when there's not enough resources, not enough funding directed to CUNY, all, everybody suffers. And as I said at the beginning, the students suffer the most. So this is why we need to figure out how to make a stronger case to have a higher allocation of society's resources going to higher education. I want to ask everybody's pardon, I do have to leave, this is, and I don't want to say it's David's fault, but you know, there was a miscommunication with my office in terms of exactly what this event was going to be, so I have to get going, but you are certainly welcome to email me with any questions. Thank you.
If, if I could just ask Mr. Lou to, if you could just give us 30 seconds, this is something that I, as you're walking out--
Sure.
--at Bear's hearing, it's in relation to the last comment. My name is John Collins, I'm an associate professor here at Queens, and I, up until two years ago, was director of Latin American Studies. And I hear and feel and I recognize exactly what you're talking about. And I would say as somebody who's been there working that, that it's a direct result of a lack of full-time faculty. So if a certain person goes on leave who offers a certain class, which is necessary for Latin American Studies, that class is not available during a really long time. If a person retires, that, that person is not replaced. And so this is a plea that, for example, Senator Stavisky is here, it's, I think, very important to guarantee a living wage for adjuncts, to give them job security. But it's even more, or, or, I'm sorry, that's incorrect. It is equally important to recognize that we're going through fundamental structural changes in the university, and that simply demanding more money is not the only way to go about it, but to think about what it means to retain tenure, what it means to sign a new contract with an American labor law whereby the contract actually, which supposedly improves the teaching load or the workload of people, in fact, has no direct bearing on their workload, which is what we happen at, what happened at Queens College. The newest PSC, the newest existing PSC contract actually reduced our teaching load, but we saw no reduction. So this strikes me as a, it's fundamentally jarring in thinking about how labor works in the, in the United States. So these are structural, structural issues that need to be thought about in addition to the dollars and cents, sort of how we allocate, what we're going for, what are online courses, what does it mean to be permanent here? I mean, I, I, and actually, I am somebody who's guilty for not giving some of the classes that you need, because there's only one of me, and if I'm doing something else, there aren't enough adjuncts who are qualified to teach certain of the very specific classes that are necessary for your major. So how can we at Queens College fail to give the classes necessary for a Latin American Studies major? Let's look at the neighborhoods surrounding us, let's look at our constituents, let's look at the people with fire in their belly who are trying to get educated and where they come from around the world. Sorry for going on too long.
So I think that's a really interesting point, to bring in, in labor law into this, and definitely something that we can talk about and we should talk about, especially in New York State, so you know, we can touch base. But, and Regina personal note, I had to take time off from CUNY because I couldn't afford my classes, and when I could go back, my classes weren't being offered because there were not enough professors to teach it. And so that further delayed my graduation, and personally, I, I understand the struggle, and that's definitely something that we need to be thinking of, not only fiscal impact on the schools and the facilities, but on, on the future and the timeline of the impact on students. And CUNY is, there are a lot of institutions that are supposed to be Hispanic-serving institutions in CUNY, and most of them aren't led by a lot of Latin American courses, and there aren't cultural components to it, and so thinking about culture-responsive education and higher education is something that we should also bring to the table.
One last question? Do we have a last question? You want the last one? Iris, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Always. Okay, no, it's streaming. Iris, use the mic, it's streaming.
I want to go back to the question of funding and the frustration that each and everyone that has anything to do with trying to make sure that this university can work the way that it's supposed to work, what we've done, we have not, we have not been able to catch up. So basically, what I want to put out, I'd like to have Senator Stavisky talk about this a little bit. When Senator, when Governor Spitzer came on board, he made a recommendation about allocating a special fund, something that would take care of the funding for higher education. I don't know if that's the answer, and I think some of that money was supposed to be coming from gambling or lottery or whatever, and I'm not in support of that either, but the idea of having some kind of special fund for higher education, maybe we need to think about a different way of getting the money. Clearly, it's not working. What we have been doing is exactly what people have been asking us to do and more, and we're not getting the funding that we need to be able to have this university work the way it's supposed to, whether it's faculty, whether it's staff, and most importantly, provide the students with what they need. Full-time faculty, good-paid-for adjuncts, all of it. I don't want to regurgitate any of that, but I would like us to think creatively, is the, is the only structure for getting guaranteed funding for the City University or higher ed in general, the process that we have now? Or is there a possibility of thinking creatively of another way of making sure that these institutions get the funding that they need to run? That's the question.
Since I gave Iris my question, I just want to add one addition, and that is that I've been here a very long time, and I've never quite understood why the governor doesn't love us, okay?
No, I can't argue with that. First of all, let me thank Iris for coming to lobby me in Albany on a regular basis. We've known each other a lot, she's come to lobby when we were in the minority. The real answer is that we've got to think creatively of how, what we can do. The one-third, one-third, one-third statute, I think, is a possibility. Secondly, we are limited in what we can do in terms of the budget because of a court, you mentioned Governor Spitzer. After Governor Spitzer, we had Governor Patterson, and there was a lawsuit, this was during the fiscal crisis in 2008, 2009, when we had a, a major recession. There was a court case known as Silver versus Pataki, which severely limited the legislature's ability to change the governor's spending part of the budget. And in fact, we, we overrode vetoes, I think there were several hundred, if you remember. And what we did was, was held to be unconstitutional in the lawsuit. Shelley Silver was the speaker of the Assembly, he brought the lawsuit against then-Governor Pataki, and lost. And the result is that the courts do not hold the answer for us. It's my opinion that the only way we can overcome Silver versus Vipataki is through a constitutional amendment, and that is something that we are looking at, because this is a, an executive with, in my opinion, too much power in the budget. And I think that is the ultimate solution, but it takes a long time.
Any last comments?
I've got it, Ron, I've got it.
Yeah, yeah.
11:30.
Last comments?
Last comment. Well, thank you for putting this together, David, and everybody for coming, and it's been a difficult period, but hopefully we will be stronger and try to learn from our mistakes, and next year have a more positive budget. Thank you.
I can just leave it at, recently, a colleague of mine shared a great article that, that talked about, you know-- We need the time to critically think, deep thought. We need time to, to, to get to that point where we're critically thinking, and in order to do that, we can't be worrying about, about bills, and, and how we're going to take the subway, and how we're going to eat. So, so that being said, the hope is that the legislature and the governor will stop funding programs like Excelsior that don't benefit students and start funding, fully funding and expanding programs that do benefit students, like ASAP, for example, that alleviates the burden, the financial burden that so many students go through. So that being said, I just want to wrap it up, saying that, you know, we're all part of CUNY Rising Alliance, the PSC, the unions, student groups, NIPerg, USS. So I think that the, the answer is that we just need to strategize and figure out how to politically target the governor. This is a, a power thing, I guess, and the power's with the people, and we just need to continue organizing. So we're in solidarity. Thank you so much for having me, and I'll be here to answer any questions.
Before you go, I want you to let me know that immediately after this opening, Kylie, there is open conversation about the 7K issue with James Baskin, I think he's back there, and there's also going to be on Tuesday, a 14K gradient, if you, if you want to be grading work in public to show you might pay a moment, contact us, we're working for students. And if--